Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of the County of Lenox and Addington for the 24th of September to order at 2:06 PM. Can I get an adoption of the special meeting held September 8th, 2025? Those minutes being adopted. John Wise, seconded by Counselor Davison. Any edits, errors, or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. We have an agenda before us. Can I get an approval to adopt the agenda? Counselor Fridge, seconded by Deputy Warden. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none, we move to the Warden's report. Can I get a motion to receive? Counselor Hogg, seconded by Counselor Calver. Any questions on that? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Matters for consideration: Loyalist Ambulance Base update. And the chief is on line.
Hi, Warden through you. I believe Mr. Wagler is going to speak today.
Mr. Wagler is going to... Okay. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. The Loyalist Ambulance Base project is on schedule. Subsequent to this meeting, we're ready to submit for site plan application to Loyalist Township. Just want to give you a little review of where we're at now. So, the plan is after the purchase of the lot at the corner of Taylor Kid or Canyon Road 23 and Canyon Road 6. By locating the building as close to Canyon Road 6 as possible should improve response time because then they're not coming out of the business park. The ambulances will be coming directly out onto Canyon Road 6 and will have a view of the railroad tracks, therefore further allowing decision-making of what way to go to speed response time. There is an estimate in the budget, but the... I just do want to thank Loyalist Township staff. Part of the planning process to locate that building close to Canyon Road 6 would involve not meeting the zoning requirements for that property. And to move the building, you know, closer to the subdivision, we would have had additional costs in asphalt driveways as well as other, like just building costs and site costs. But with Loyalist staff coming up with the idea to include a cold storage building, which we kind of need cold storage for emergency services equipment as well as some property equipment, that actually building pays for itself just by the savings of... or the idea from Loyalist Township staff. So, I want to thank you for them. But the building will be designed for like a passive building structure, so it's going to have some environmental features. And staff will be reviewing the detailed design of the building for the passive technologies and looking at lifecycle costing throughout the full lifecycle of the building and not just the, you know, the heating or cooling systems at that time. The estimate currently right now is at 7.9 million. That is, I'm going to say like a comfortable estimate. Like, it does have contingencies built in here, but there's also additional contingencies. So, staff expect that this price would come in lower if tendered today or within the next several months. And if you've, as you see from the previous... or sorry, from the additional requests, staff are requesting that council direct staff to include this in the earlier tending report as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions, should council have any.
Council, questions for Mr. Wagler. Counselor Wise.
Yes, thank you, Warden. So, this is a fairly preliminary estimate, but it's considerably more expensive and elaborate than, for example, the fire station in Stone Mills. I realize there's a storage building there and so on. Is this expected to get more use? Does it... It looks like it has more bays. What are the main factors that lead to, I guess, a more elaborate building that justify a more elaborate building?
So, through you, Mr. Warden. When we're designing a building, we can't build for today. We need to build for tomorrow. So, there is growth that is in the building, so it does have some additional bays that aren't required today but maybe required 10 years down the road. Now, we... There's still additional bays that can be added on, say, for 50 or 75 years down the road. But we also enhance the training room, if you will. There's several reasons for that. Additionally, we were thinking about 40, like a 40-person room. However, to do a staff training event for management, like we can't even fit into that. We need something with around 60. But in addition to the size, not just for training, it will back up as a potential backup council chamber. It can back up as an emergency operating center. Our backup operating center now is at the John M. Parrott Center, which is fine, but there's a risk there that if there's an incident here in Greater Napanee that affects, you know, let's say a train derailment, and we don't know what's on that train, but it affects this building as well as the John M. Parrott Center, which is just a few kilometers away, we wouldn't have a backup operating center. So, having something in Loyalist further away from the county main office here in Napanee is ideal. But it could also act as a warming center during an emergency as well. So, we just, again, want to plan for the future.
And sorry to just to follow up on that, if I may, Warden through you.
Yeah, go ahead, Chief.
Additionally, we are currently storing vehicles outside, so we have to be very cautious of the drugs freezing and whatnot in the winter. So, those vehicles would then be moved indoors. Addition, the trailer that is currently stored outside would be placed in this building. And two of the additional bays are, Counselor, are what we call a decontamination bay. So, if a crew is exposed to a hazardous product or, let's say, a bed bug, something along those lines, they can pull into that bay and be totally separated from the rest of the building. They can clean the truck. They can then have a shower and then enter the regular working area clean, not contaminated, not contaminating any other part of the building. So, that addition... In addition to the enhancements that Mr. Wagler spoke of.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Warden, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Mine would actually be directed to the Director of Financial Services. We've got a couple of reports before us today that are... could incur a fair bit of debt, potentially. And I know there's been discussions in the past where the county is in very close to paying off some long-term debt that we've had. I was just curious, going forward, when... Do you have an estimate or do you... Will there be a... When will be the time when council could make decisions on funds going into reserves or going towards projects to offset potential debt?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Very good question. Annually, we do, when I do the surplus allocation from the prior years, we look at our reserve balances, and that's open for council's discussion. And you could allocate different amounts of reserves, move reserves around to cover certain projects if council so wishes to help reduce the debt. The reports in front of you tonight are just an example of using some of those reserve balances. It's just been an estimate. As you know, our reserves are used for other capital projects. So, the, for example, on this report in front of council right now, I just estimated 25% because those reserves are also used for ambulances, other equipment, other supplies, maintenance and stuff that's required throughout the 10-year plan. But by all means, council will have that decision to make on where they want to allocate the reserves to that we do have. And a report can become to council during budget deliberations, for sure.
Counselor Fridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Chris, I'm just trying to get an understanding of the, I'm going to call it square footage or meter squared cost of the new base. If you looked at, say, the last ambulance base we built in Stone Mills, looked at the meter squared cost, and you looked at this proposed base with the meter squared cost, and you adjusted that for inflation, that's kind of a loaded question, but do you know how they would compare current construction costs?
Because of the age of the previous ambulance bases, the one in Stone Mills and the one in Addison Highlands, we actually looked at area construction. So, we looked at... There's been two or three. I want to say there was one in Hastings. There was one in, it was either City of Kingston or South Frontenac, and recently closed within in the last six months. There was a couple other buildings that were starting construction. So, we use those numbers. It's more reasonable to look at, you know, current pricing and market value. If you just use what we paid, say, six years ago and added percentage, it doesn't really tell you what the market's doing. So, that's why we use more up-to-date numbers, and we didn't really compare, you know, previous construction builds.
Just a follow-up then. So, is... I'm just trying to understand this. Is it thought... Is it believed that then, even if you adjusted that for inflation, that current construction costs are significantly higher, if all things being equal, or do you know?
I would say that, obviously, since COVID, a lot of the structural components of a building, whether it's a house or a commercial or institutional building, all costs have gone up. They haven't, you know, obviously went back to pre-COVID, even with inflationary costs. So, yes, I would expect the overall cost per square foot as on a material base is relatively higher than it would be just on base inflation alone.
Other questions from council? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation to note and receive the update. Counselor Wise, seconded by Counselor Calver. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Number two, high-density social housing. I'll turn to the Director.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. Staffs looking for council direction regarding a new high-density build, whether it's in Loyalist Township or Addison Highlands or in Stone Mills. So, staff's looking for direction regarding the Church Street property, whether or not council wants to proceed with the build there, and if so, the number of units, therefore the size of the building, as well as our staff interested in... Or sorry, is council interested in expanding and developing units in Addison Highlands and in Stone Mills? And if so, we could do a joint tender with all three. Like, so like Building 1 would be part A, Building 2 would be part B, Building C would be part 3. And in that process, it would come back to council for final review whether they wanted to then commit to additional builds at that time. So, just going through the report, the timing of this report is really to let Loyalist Township know council's intent. The Church Street property, we don't need the full Church Street property, depending on the size of the build. If the build wants to go through with county council, Loyalist Township has some external opportunities to develop that property. So, to be fair to them and to meet the dates of their application, where that funding would come in, where we would get back 204,000, we need to let Loyalist Township know county's intent. So, there's lots of pricing options in here, from a fourplex to a 12-unit, all the way up to, I believe, it was a 68-unit building. Looking at the information that we have on hand, in partnership with Lynn Chenier, the Director of Social Services, I reviewed the heart report, which tells us, like, we don't have a report that tells us you need this building here. It just... We just have a report that tells us that the majority of the buildings, and I believe it was like 92 or 95%, are one-bedroom units. So, that would... If we did build a building, the smaller the number of units, I would recommend them being, you know, a one-bedroom unit for tenants. Now, if we did a bigger building, I would expect about 5% of those would maybe be a two-bedroom. But again, that's for council direction to staff. If you look at the Church Street property, even half of that, like going to a fourplex, we're going to need about a quarter, like, so the quarter of that size just for parking and the building. But the ultimate size will be determined by staff and by Loyalist Township with, you know, through site plan approval. Going over some of the financial options, so we just refer you to the last chart, the estimated annual cost for high-density housing. We've included operational costs as well. So, like, it's the average operational cost of a unit, and that includes staff time as well as capital costs and regular operating costs such as heat, hydro, and minor repairs. I'd be happy to answer any questions, should council have any.
I'll just start with general questions, and then we can get to make... So, Counselor Fridge?
Yes, I do have a general question. Chris, I think it's one of our social housing units is that this year the mortgage is being paid off? Or when one of them, our debt is... We're near the end of it, where we're not making that annual payment, I believe. I thought that was the case.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I can answer that. I think you might be getting that mixed up with the JMPC debt that is fully paid for on that. So, the housing, there is no debt on the housing. There's the... Meadowville Lane has a couple more years on it. It's a couple more years.
Yeah, that's the one I was thinking of, yes. So, it's... Okay.
Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Calver.
Thank you, through your worship. I don't see the sense in likely even considering just a four-unit building. I mean, if you've got the space, you might as well build as big as you can build and plan for the future. I see here anywhere from a fourplex to a 68-unit low-rise, so go big or stay home.
Thanks, Counselor Calver. Others? Yep. Counselor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I'll reiterate what Counselor Calver has said. You know, it's difficult that we don't have the housing needs study, but I think the reality of it is, is that we probably don't need the housing needs study when we look around our municipalities and see what's going on. I have to agree with Counselor Calver in the fact that I think for a unit, four-unit building is not even a drop in the bucket. And so, we must, we have to look at something more than that. When you look at a lot of the buildings that we do have, I have to think that they're probably coming near their expiry date, for better lack of a word. If we don't start investing into new buildings now, we're going to get stuck having a whole bunch of old buildings that are going to need a ton of work that we're just not going to be able to afford anyway. So, it would be my suggestion that, you know, in reality, sure, I'd love to see a 68-unit building put on that piece of property. I think that would get us well into the future. There's a lot of zeros associated to a 68-unit building as well, right? So, but I do think we need to look at something more substantial than four, maybe something in the area of a 28-unit building, even 42. But I just don't think that four is going to cut it. I think that's, you know, it's going to be filled five or six times over before it even gets built, right? So, I would concur with Counselor Calver in the fact that I do think we need to look a little bit bigger. We do have an opportunity for the land on the... I was going to ask the question, but as I went back through the report, I see that there is a sufficient amount of land there if we do want to expand it. And I do think that we need to let our friends at Loyalist Township know reasonably soon that if we're going to need more than a quarter, that, you know, we should commit to something anyways. So, that would be my suggestion, anyway. So, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Duly noted. Thank you, Counselor Richardson. So, I'm conscious of the various clauses for direction, so let's take a step, one step back and look for direction from council on whether to proceed with the construction process for a social housing project on the Church Street property in Loyalist. I think we've established that Napanee's on board. Others? Yep, Deputy Warden.
Yes, Loyalist Township is on board with it. I agree with that, and we can talk about numbers of units, but the overall concept, I believe, we should proceed with.
Look to our other partners. Counselor Wise.
Yeah, there's no question that there's a need and there's funding available for this particular project. So, that seems to be a reasonable assumption. And really, it comes down to, as Counselor Richardson was saying, at what point in this chart, between four and 68, do we draw the line? I mean, we don't have a housing needs study to establish what that particular area really needs. I'm wondering, Jim, if your council has given any sort of thought to what size of building you might prefer or are tending towards, if I can ask a direct question of my colleague.
Through me, you can, and I'll turn to the Deputy Warden.
It eventually makes it to me. There's been a number of different scenarios, and we've got a number of properties that are becoming available. So, we're working with different potential developers, with the county being one of them. Basically, it's not so much how many units are going into this particular spot. It's just however many units are going in, that will be the allocation of land. And then with the property, if it's big enough, like if the county doesn't use the whole property, we have other entities that are waiting to... They've already approached us and had meetings with us and pre-consults, and they're, as well as the township, they're waiting for an answer on this so they know if there's availability for them. I guess the feedback, I might as well share some of that as well. The community that this will be going in is an established community. This is going on a stub street, so it would be directly tied in with an existing community. High density, I believe there would be, well, I know there would be substantial discussion over that within the community and feedback to council. So, I guess in this situation here, probably something a little more moderate would be better received and be able to proceed a lot faster. So, the numbers here like to go up into the... Where are they here? Like, 28 and above would be... It would be a challenge to be received in that, in the community. I guess I'll just put it that way. If that answers your question. Yes, sir. Thanks.
I'm just going to turn to the CAO for a suggestion on what we might do with that because I think Counselor Wise's question is reasonable.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a question for Chris. In terms of the obligation for Loyalist to the federal government for their grant funding, they need certain answers within a certain timeline to meet their obligations. If we responded back to say, yes, council's interested in moving ahead with funding and the construction of a project, is there still time within their mandate to get back to the feds to have a discussion on how many units? So, my question is, do you need an answer on the number of units today or just the fact that, yes, council's willing to do construction on a project and we still have time to discuss, to Counselor Hegedorn's point, of what's palatable for the community and what their council's looking for?
So, yeah, my... Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. My understanding is in discussion with Loyalist staff that they just need a confirmation that the county's willing to proceed at this time, and we need to have, as part of their funding, at least four units. My recommendation would be to meet the timelines because the next timeline is to have a building permit as of 2027. In order to do that, we still need to do the engineering design starting in 2026, so that's why we're asking to carry that money in the proposed 2026 budget. I believe at that time, during like a January or budgeting meeting, if we had direction from council as to how much they wanted to then put in, because that money would then go into the 2027 budget to start construction for that, if staff had direction from council at that time, that would still satisfy Loyalist Township criteria. And then further to Counselor Wise's question, are we allowed to discuss the other options that have been discussed with Loyalist as to the size of the... You know, if we were to take a small portion of that property, what would be built beside it? Might help council decide the size of the units that they, that council would like? So, that way, they're not too big or not too small? Is that... Are we allowed to share that information? I was not directed to, like, when I sat in with Loyalist Township staff at the meeting, it was not told to me that it was, is by any means secret. But so, the agency that is looking to work with Loyalist Township are looking, to my knowledge, was a 12-unit building that they would build on that site with whatever land we didn't want, and it could be multiple buildings as well. So, if that helps answer council's question as to a size of a unit, not going too big or not going too small to fit in with adjacent development.
Go ahead. I'll turn to the CAO.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, a thought for council would be just to give direction to staff to say, yes, you're willing to commit to the construction of social housing on the project? Because I'll just draw your memory back to the original ask for lower tiers was would the lower tier provide land at no cost and waive development fees or charges in order to facilitate social housing? And we did that decision on the Church Street property when we had our Amherst Island meeting. But at that point, that was just to make a project, a piece of land shovel-ready. So, there was never a motion actually from council to say, yes, we want to actually do construction on it as well. So, if we have that motion from council today with a direction for staff to go back to have a consultation with Loyalist staff about size of building and other partners that might be building on the additional pieces of property, from what the Director is saying, you still have time then to make those decisions before the budget process in January, February. So, today you would just be looking for a motion to say, yes, you want to proceed with construction on the project.
Counselor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I'll concur with Ms. Orchard, but I'm going to throw a little fly into the ointment here, a little bit, is in the fact that we're now talking a whole different story than we did when we were on Amherst Island. And so, would it be prudent to maybe open the discussion up to some of the other properties that were available? Because I know some of the other properties that were available may be more high-density friendly than the one that we're talking about today. Would it be prudent, because the conversation has now changed, that we look at maybe the other properties unless they're maybe not available at this point? And I'd have to ask my friend, Counselor Hegedorn, but obviously, we're talking about a different game here. We really are. If we're going to go from four to 12 or four to 28, it's a completely different discussion, I think. And should we open that discussion up to the other properties that may or may not be available, that were available at our Amherst Island meeting?
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Wagler.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. The properties in Addison Highlands and Stone Mills, due to development requirement on, to be on septic, only a fourplex is applicable in those locations. The two other properties available to us in Loyalist Township are not sufficient in size for anything larger than a fourplex, to my knowledge. One might be slightly, you might get an eightplex or, excuse me, a sixplex, but the other one, I don't, you can't even get a fourplex. I think like a twoplex for sure, a threeplex would be, might be possible, but we'd have to look at details, design for that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I wasn't referring, referring to the Stone Mills or the Addison Highlands. I was referring to the one in Loyalist Township. And I thought maybe the one, there was a piece of property, I think, behind the fire hall, I thought, maybe big enough, but maybe it's not. So, I'll leave it at that for now, I guess, unless Counselor Hegedorn or Deputy Warden Hegedorn can advise.
Go ahead, Deputy Warden, yep.
The property at the fire hall will be eventually available, but if I remember correctly, the township is doing a needs study because that's potentially an expansion location for some more emergency services. And the street isn't built yet that that will front on, so immediate construction wouldn't be possible unless the county took on bringing services up that side street in order to get it there. So, that would be fair, that would be delayed by quite some time.
No, you answered my question, so thank you.
I'll come to you in a minute. Counselor Fitch, Counselor Wise.
Yes, thank you. So it would appear that what we need is a motion expressing our interest in proceeding with a development on this property in Loyalist regardless of size. And perhaps, secondly, to suggest that as planning proceeds, that we coordinate with, I guess, the private agency or the other agency that wants to develop there, so that we've got a coordinated plan for the entire property, and that will help determine the size of our commitment. So that would be my motion, unless you want me to add in anything else here from this lengthy recommendation.
I will, I'll take, come back to that. I will take that motion in a second.
Yep.
I'll come to Counselor Fitch, who had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My question is just related to sort of the structure of the staff report. So are we going to, are we planning to break this down into these several, three or four questions, three, four separate motions? That's the plan? Thank you.
Upon advice from the clerk, I'll take, we'll do this in chunks. So we'll do with what you have proposed. Counselor Wise, I would just, if I may, add that you would receive the report as well. And so I'll take that motion. Is there a second, or? Counselor Calver, discussion on that motion, or any need for further clarity? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay. So the next one is with respect to the Addington Highlands and Stone Mills properties. Yeah, Counselor Fitch.
Well, I can't really, I don't have sort of the, you know, the position of Stone Mills, but certainly my belief is that we're not committing to construction with this. But I think the intent should be, we support that we move forward with shovel-ready in both Addington Highlands and in Loyalist. We think that is a good thing to do. There's a need there. It's on a much smaller scale, and, but we believe we should go down that path. And you can also, you can always make a decision later on, if you're going to pick both of those, one of those, or whatever you're going to do. But obviously, it would be a fourplex. There's not, nothing larger than that. That's certainly our view on it.
Thank you, Counselor Fitch. Counselor Wise?
Yes, certainly, you can include Stone Mills in your motion, Tony, if you're making a motion. Really, all, the only cost involved, since we're donating the land, would be a road. And to get four more units of housing in the Village of Tamworth is advantageous to everyone involved. It's just a question of whether this adds, and I haven't done the math in my head, how this changes the cost commitment of the county to deal with both of these projects. And I'm wondering if you could explain that.
I'll turn to the CAO.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So you recall back when you did your budget, you put $75,000 each to develop three shovel-ready affordable housing projects, just to get them shovel-ready, so that if grants, if grants came up, like the one that Loyalist was able to take advantage of from the federal government, as they become available, that we could access them, or the lower tier could access them, whatever. So that money's already been set aside in the budget. So it'd be up to $75,000 to make the lot shovel-ready in Addington Highlands and a lot shovel-ready in Stone Mills. So it's already been set aside.
So I'll make, I'll make this motion that we wish to develop Addington Highlands and Stone Mills property as both fourplexes as shovel-ready for social housing.
So moved, seconded by Counselor Wise. Discussion on that motion. Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Excellent. We shall move on. We're good. Some lengthy clauses. So item number three, Consolidated Municipal Service Manager. Over to the Director.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. As a follow-up to my verbal report from September 8th, this written report outlines the responsibilities of the service manager under the Housing Services Act, as well as clarification around the delegated authority granted to Prince Edward Lennox in Addington Social Services. I won't go into all of the history, but just to highlight that consolidated municipal service managers are referred to as just service managers in the Housing Services Act, and Lennox in Addington County is the service manager, according to that act. However, in accordance with the Joint Services Agreement between the County of Lennox and Addington and Prince Edward County, Prince Edward Lennox and Addington Social Services is the delegated authority to deliver Ontario Works, childcare, and social housing, and is governed by the Joint Services Committee, known as Prince Edward Lennox and Addington Social Services Committee. The role of Lennox in Addington County is responsible for administrative support to the Joint Services Committee, including operating as the employer for staff, managing contracts, provision of administrative support to the Joint Services Committee, and benefit management for all of the clients within the geographic boundaries of both counties. So while the County of Lennox and Addington is the designated service manager, it is not responsible for the direct delivery of services. And the direct delivery of services responsibility falls to the Prince Edward Lennox and Addington Social Services Committee. And I would be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Chenye. Turn to council. Counselor Richardson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Ms. Chenye, for the report. It has become much clearer, at least to me anyways, where we are in life with this. The only thing I just wanted to clarify is, so is Pallas actually a incorporated company? Or are they simply a delegated authority of the service manager, which is the County of Lennox and Addington?
Ms. Chenye?
Thank you for the question. I will offer for Mark to jump in if he'd like to. I believe it's a separate corporation, because the local housing corporation is the owner of the properties that the social housing units sit on. So I believe it is separate.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Just to clarify, the housing corporation is on the board, is the Pallas Committee, and the CAO and myself, but Pallas is not incorporated as a corporation, but they do run independently with that committee, but they're not incorporated as a corporation.
Okay, no, that makes sense to me. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Day, and thank you, Ms. Chenye.
Any other questions? Recommendation to note and receive. Deputy Warden, seconded by Counselor Hogg. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Tender request, early tender requests. Over to Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. Staff bring this report to council every year, typically for our hot mix program and any major projects. This year, we're asking early tender requests for the hot mix, Odessa Main Street reconstruction for Phase One, construction of the Loyalist ambulance base, and the purchase of a replacement vehicle. And I know a replacement vehicle doesn't sound too expensive, or why do we get ahead of that? But just one of the vehicles that council agreed to purchase back in February, March, we're still waiting for delivery on. It just, it takes a long time to get, to get vehicles for some reason. So anyway, happy to answer any questions, should council have any.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Questions from council? We do have a recommendation. Counselor Fitch moves the recommendation. Did I see Counselor Richardson seconds? Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Next, tax subclass. And I'll turn to Mr. Day.
Through you, Mr. Warden. The purpose of this report is to inform county council of the new affordable rental housing tax subclass that's been implemented by the province. As you can see in the report, it's quite extensive in what the requirements and that are. There was a deadline, that if council was interested in passing it, it was September 30th of this year. At the time of this writing, I was unaware of any other municipalities that have passed this subclass. I think the approach has been to look at what other effects it will have, when we look at tax policy and ratios, because in the financial impact, any changes on those subclass would be mainly borne by the residential property class. So we're just bringing this to your attention, and we will be looking at it as our overall tax policy. When we look at multi-res ratio, as you know, there's three different, sorry, two different rates. We have new multi-residential and the existing one, and that's just based on a date. And for council to look at what is fair amongst all the different classes, it needs to be looked at as a whole. And also with the fact that we do not know what our assessment is yet for 2026, and there could be shifts in what the growth and rates are amongst the lower tiers. Happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thanks, Mr. Day. Questions from council? Seeing none, there's simply a recommendation to note and receive. Deputy Warden, seconded by Counselor Calver. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Next, we have the Integrity Commissioner Services, and I'll turn to our clerk.
Through you, Mr. Warden. So the county's contract with Eardon Burles comes up at the end of this year. In July, we brought this to council to say, do you want us to go to RFP, or do you want us to renew the extension? At that time, council directed staff to go to an RFP when there was more clarity in regards to provincial legislation that will affect Integrity Commissioner Services. So we committed at that time that if there was more information that came forward, we'd bring it back to council. Since that time, Bill 9 has been introduced in provincial legislature, has not been enacted yet, but it's expected to take effect by the new term of council in 2026, the end of 2026. It would have quite a few changes in it that affect Integrity Commissioner Services. Since that time also, Loyalist Township have decided that they are going to go with an extension with Eardon Burles. And we've also been told that Addington Highlands will do so also if the county is doing so. So we're suggesting now that we go ahead with an extension for two years that will span the new council coming in, then the new council can make a decision at that point. But we would also have a clause in the extending agreement that will allow for some flexibility around this new legislation. So I'd be pleased to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Questions? Seeing none, there is a recommendation. Moved by Counselor Davison, seconded by Counselor Hogg. Any discussion? Very well. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. And we come to committee reports. Technical Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. The TAC group has met several times over the last year. At a recent meeting, we made some great changes, identifying, you know, the how, the what, and the when of what services are going to be provided on our roads, road system, and detailing those details in the agreement. I would like to highlight, though, that in discussions with, you know, the services and the methods, the delivery method of those services, there are some challenges that were identified by county staff, as well as all member municipalities. And we're thinking at this time that a service delivery review request may come to council at a later date, so I just wanted to identify that for council. We're just looking at all of our options right now and getting input from the local municipalities to see what data we have and what would be needed as part of that review. I'd be happy to answer any questions, should council have any.
Thanks, Mr. Wagner. Questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the JMPC compliance report. Ms. Malcolm.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. Okay, so the occupancy rates have been very steady. We've had 12 admissions over the month of, months of July and August. This is a July and August combination. We've had really good use of our respite bed, nine in July and 10 in August, which is really indicative of the need for the community with this bed. We continue to rely on agency staffing for RPNs and for RNs, and in the foreseeable future, don't see that reducing at this point in time. We did have a visit with our ministry compliance inspectors for four days over in August. They inspected resident to, staff-to-resident abuse, medication incident, and a fall resulting in injury. There was no findings other than a written notification related to the staff-to-resident abuse, and that was around a delay in reporting. Again, I'm not going to get, I'm not concerned that somebody has the moral integrity to reflect and think about what they saw and then report it the next day to us. And so for that, we will get a finding, but at the end of the day, our residents are protected and safe, and staff are doing the right thing. As far as quality indicators are concerned, you can see in the chart that, first of all, that you're missing two graphs, so I can talk to you about that. The antipsychotic use without a diagnosis is really very much improving and very much indicative of a team effort around the appropriate medications that residents are taking. The worsened or remained, remain dependent in mid-loss activities of daily living, which is ADLs, reflected that we do have a training opportunity for our frontline staff, in that sometimes residents will regularly refuse care, but that doesn't mean that they actually shouldn't have the care. And so it's how we would document what that would look like, so we can more accurately reflect what their needs are versus what they perceive that they may, may need. The residents who fell in the last 30 days, we are a bit high compared to the provincial average. However, we also have 13 of the 15 people that had fallen do use a mobility aid, which naturally does result in a potential higher risk of falls. Residents with worsening pain, this is an up and down indicator, and nothing that I'm particularly concerned at all about. And it does reflect the higher complexity of care and the significant treatments and things that are happening within disease processes. So I'm comfortable with what we see in that data. The worsening stage two to four pressure ulcers is an absolutely incredible accomplishment that we have seen in this area. This is very much connected to the RNAO Best Practice Spotlight organization that we're striving on. But over the provincial, or sorry, over the past eight months, the provincial benchmark has run around 3%. Over the eight-month time, though, the Paris Center has been below that five times. Three of those times, we've had zero as our indicator, which is really, really incredible, because as you may know, pressure ulcers can happen because of disease process, because of continence level, because of mobility level. So it is a testament to the amount of work that's involved in our resident care. Nothing particular in our, to draw your attention to in the chart related to infection prevention and control, other than we are going to be starting up our flu shot and COVID vaccination for both staff and residents again. And that is all I have to say. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Questions on the compliance report? Seeing none, can I get a motion to receive both the TAC report and the compliance report? Counselor Wise, seconded by Counselor Fitch. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Activity reports. We'll start with the CAO.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple things to highlight for council. The first one being our staff service awards, because you know, we recognize our staff every year. Because you know we recognize our staff every year in increments of five years, five, 10, 15, up to 35 or 40. We did it differently this year because we wanted to respect, everybody's different. And everybody wants to be recognized in different ways. Some people aren't comfortable coming to a big council meeting and getting recognized in that way. So we wanted to give options for staff. So we actually asked, the directors asked the staff, how would you like to be recognized? And we're going to take your personal desires into consideration. So some people said just one-on-one with my director is great. Some people would say at a team meeting with my department, great. Some said at the barbecue. You see, on August 12th, we had a family barbecue with staff and families, and some chose that method. So we're doing it in different ways based on the desires of our staff, which is appropriate this year. So I just wanted to highlight that for you, that that's been taking place. The other thing I'm just going to highlight, in case you want, bedtime reading. As you know, I'm president of KAMA. I'm honored to be president of KAMA. But I've served on the KAMA Toolkit Committee as chair for a number of years and privileged to be able to support our profession by developing toolkits for CAOs. And this latest toolkit is a remarkable one. It's sort of everything guide for CAOs. It started out being a guide for new CAOs within the first three years of their career. But we did, I did focus groups at lunchtimes with CAOs, 72 CAOs from every province and territory. And even experienced CAOs said, you know what, this is a good refresher for me. So you should take the new off of it and just make it a leadership guide for CAOs. So that's what we've done. I don't see the link in here, but we'll send it out to you so that you have the link in case you want some bedtime reading. It is over 200 pages. I'll just warn you ahead of time. But it's something we're very proud of. It really adds to the profession and provides support to CAOs. Something we're proud of, and I just wanted to share it with you. A ton of volunteer hours go into this. This is evenings, weekends, and lunch hours. So just wanted to draw it to your attention in case you're ever curious about what CAOs do. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the CAO? Seeing none, we'll move to Financial Services.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I have nothing to highlight, but happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions on Financial Services? Social Services. Ms. Chenye.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to the rest of council, just a couple of things to highlight. So planning has commenced for the five-year childcare and early year service plan. And staff are currently engaging community stakeholders, doing parent surveys. And those will be launched shortly and to gather input onto the early year system. And the other really good news piece of this is Palace has been notified of a one-time funding increase for early on programs in 2025, which is welcome news since there have not been any increases since 2018. So it's very welcome to our early years providers, or early on providers, sorry. On the housing side of things, on August 14th, Palace received a letter from Minister Flack from Municipal Affairs and Housing outlining the requirement to complete and submit a new 10-year housing and homelessness plan. This is welcome news because we've been waiting a year for the go-ahead to go ahead with this. And we were advised in 2024 to please wait to ensure that any new plans would take into account the ministry's guiding principles and what they were looking for in that new plan. So we've received that letter and we will be working on that. And it's due in May, the end of May of 2026. So we'll be working on that as we move forward. The only other highlight is, I just wanted to highlight that I've put in my notes from the September 8th Special County Council meeting where I provided a verbal report. So that those notes are there for you to reference, as you will. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Chenye. Questions? Counselor Wise.
Yes, thank you. Through you to Lynn. I note your first paragraph, you say that you've received two submissions for expansion of childcare services by two different private operators, I assume. But nowhere else in the county. Are you concerned that there is going to be a demand elsewhere that isn't going to be filled? Or what's your perspective on the need for childcare in other areas?
Thank you for that question. Through the Warden, we were actually highlighting business plans for Loyalist and Stone Mills and Addington Highlands. So we weren't requesting any expressions of interest from other areas of the county.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, Community and Development Services. Mr. Paul.
Thank you. Nothing to add from my side, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Paul? Seeing none, Long Term Care. Ms. Malcolm.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. The only thing that I will add is the Local Priorities Fund was something that we collaborated with Dr. Robichaud, our medical director, as well as the nursing department to identify the specific items that we requested, which I didn't include that in here in terms of who we collaborated with, but happy to take any other questions.
Any questions for Ms. Malcolm? Yep, Counselor Fritsch.
My curiosity got me, Ms. Malcolm. What is one of the devices you bought? What is a rapid rhino device?
So that will help stop a nosebleed very quickly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll turn to Emergency Services. The chief is online.
Thank you, Warden. Through you. Nothing to highlight, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the chief? Counselor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. It's more just a statement. It's refreshing to see that the calls for service are consistently dropping over the course of the last eight months, which I think we have to associate to the new dispatching system. Am I correct for that, chief?
Absolutely, council. We've definitely noticed a difference there. If people are told that, you know, there's going to be a significant delay in getting to hospital, they're recognizing that they need to just go themselves. And that's anecdotal, but that's what we're understanding, for sure.
Great, thank you. I think that's good news for our staff as well, that they're not being pushed to the limit, I guess. So thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, Human Resources. Ms. McGarvey.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. Just a shout out to Christine, Christina, Liam, David, and Kyle on their performance at the Fire Fit Challenge that was hosted by Stone Mills. It's only one evening, those events, but if you've ever been to them, it's one night or one day. But months, if not years of training go into being able to perform at that level. So congratulations to that team. Thank you.
Any questions for HR? Seeing none, Infrastructure Services. Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. Just like to highlight that and welcome Sarah Jane Pratt to the team. She's joining Property Services as the project technologist. And I'd also like to congratulate Aiden Taylor, who's a GIS technician. He successfully achieved his basic operations for remotely piloted aircraft or drones. Be happy to answer any questions should council have any.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Any questions? Seeing none, I would take a motion to receive all those activity reports as one. Counselor Fritsch, seconded by Counselor Calver. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. We have matters for information. We have some correspondence from our friends at the town of Greater Napanee. Our council's wishes. Deputy Warden?
Note and receive.
Motion to note and receive, seconded by Counselor Hogg. Any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Any statements by members? I will just say that thank you to staff and to council and to the lower-tier members of council who attended our county activity day today. It was a great success, a good opportunity to meet colleagues from our lower tiers and help share the work that we do at the county. So my thanks to everyone who was in attendance. Any notices of motion? Any matters of urgency? We do have a motion to go into closed, pursuant to Section 239.2 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended. This part of the meeting will be closed to the public in order to adopt closed session minutes, to ratify a collective agreement, and to consider information supplied in confidence to the municipality. Can I have a motion to that effect? Counselor Calver, seconded by Counselor Davison. All those in favor? Motion is carried. We will go into closed. We will go into closed. Okay, council has returned from closed session. I can report that in closed session, county council adopted closed session minutes from the meeting held September 8th, 2025, and considered a labor relations issue and information supplied to the municipality in confidence. There is also a motion coming out of closed session. That motion reads that county council ratifies the negotiated agreement with ONA, which represents registered nurses at the county's John M. Parrott Center, covering the period from April 1st, 2023, to March 31st, 2025. Can I get a mover for that motion? Counselor Calver, seconded by Counselor Wise. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Confirmation of proceedings, three readings. Counselor Hogg, seconded by Deputy Warden. All those in favor? Motion is carried. And a motion to adjourn. Counselor Wise, seconded by Counselor Richardson. All those in favor? Motion is carried.